Good evening and welcome. The Mayfair County Board of Education for Monday, January 9th, 2023. Call for work. I'd like to call on Reverend Bill Allen to first ask his final question. Please have it.
Good evening. May we bow our heads in prayer. Almighty God, our Father, we come to you. And we are grateful that a new day has made its entrance into the corridors of history. We're grateful to know that our being here has nothing to do with how good we've been, but simply says how good you've been to us. And as we come in this moment, I want to thank you for brand-new mercies and grace that's given to us daily so many times that we've taken for granted. But we pray that you would be the forgiver of our sins and to blot out our every transgression. As we come tonight, we pray for the ones who will stand here, or who will sit tonight and conduct the business of the Cleveland County school system on behalf of its citizens and, most importantly, its precious commodities known as your children. We pray now that you would make us mindful of the fact that whenever you wanted to show what greatness looked like in the kingdom, you always took a child and put them in the midst and say, "Except we become as a child." We cannot see the kingdom of heaven. So make us mindful of the fact that we must kill our pride tonight, that we must kill any arrogance and humble ourselves that we might be blessed. I pray for our system, that you will be the protector of our children, keep them safe from hurt and harm. Don't let any renegade come upon their school grounds and hurt them in any way. And then I pray for those who take care of them, the teachers, the staffs that's at every location. And many times we take it for granted that they are going to be good, but we realize until there is goodness in each of us that you can control, we all can step out of hand. So I'm asking in the name of your son, Jesus, tonight, to bless the school board tonight. Give them the wisdom, matic insights that they need to conduct the business. And we pray, oh Lord, that you would put them on one accord, that they will see every child as unique. And bless us as we go forth in your son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
If you will, stand with us for the pledge. Mr. Fitch?
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sure does sound good with a full house, so thank you. I'd like to call on Ms. Goforth and Dr. Scholl for our special recognition.
Dr. Fisher, Chairman of the Board and Board Members, it's my honor to share some wonderful news with you this evening. Back in the fall, elementary students across our state auditioned to be a part of the North Carolina State Honors Chorus. Of the 192 students that were selected for our state, 21 of those students are our very own Cleveland County school students. These talented students are here to perform for you this evening, and then we will formally recognize them.
When we stand with eyes wide open and see things that aren't to be, in a world filled with riches, we see poverty and me. There is beauty all around us, and also suffering and fear. When we stand with eyes wide open and dream of a better world, we are the dreamers. We see the visions. We see a better day, a better day to come. Is it reality or only what could be? We are the dreamers. Come share our dreams. It takes time to build a dream, and it takes patience. It takes hard to build a dream, and it takes courage. It takes friends to build a dream, many hands to build a dream. We can't do it all alone. Will you join us? Will you join us? We are the dreamers. We see the visions. We see a better day, a better day to come. Is it reality or only what could be? We are the dreamers. Come share our dreams. Come and stand with us, hand in hand with us, and help us build our dreams.
At this time, Dr. Fisher will present a certificate to each of these students. From Bethware Elementary, Beckham Williams. From Kazer Elementary, Zella Emery. From Fallston Elementary, Mackenzie James. Jenna Probst. Peyton Syke. From Grover Elementary, Evan Goodnight. From Kings Mountain Intermediate, Addison Frizzle. Hayes Laney. Braylon Laws. Jenica Watson. Sophia Wilson. From Township 3 Elementary, Kyle Champion. Kanaya Lydiker. From Washington Elementary, Titiana Benson. Chloe Panther. Gracie Willis. And from West Elementary, Catherine Fulton. Alston Lad. And Seth Tate. Please join me in giving them all one more round of applause. So if you're on the back row on the stage, stay on the back row. If you're on the front row, get on the front, bottom person you were standing. There you go. Okay? We would be remiss if we did not acknowledge the teachers that made this happen. They guided them through this rigorous process of auditioning. From Bethware Elementary, Keith Eagle. From Kazer and Union Elementary, Barbara McNeely. From Fallston Elementary, Susan Fogelman. From Grover and West Elementary, Casey Vess. From Kings Mountain Intermediate, Angie Costner. From Township 3 Elementary, Bonnie Scrubs. And from Washington Elementary, Shirley Queen.
I'm learning how to do this better. There we are.
All right, tighten up. Come on in. All right, if you can see me, I can see you. Here we go. Everybody ready? One, two, three. Congratulations.
Good?
Yeah.
Mr. McDaniel, if you'd like to make your way up and recognize your folks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The NCASBO School Business Management Academy was established in 2006 to develop future school business leaders through a comprehensive training program in the area of school finance. The academy provides focused training to business officials in order to promote the highest professional and ethical standards of school business management practices for North Carolina schools, offer practical information that helps school business officials succeed and excel in their employment, and establishes a basis for advancing professionalism of school business officials to assure school districts that current or prospective business officials have a base knowledge about laws, regulations, and procedures for the ultimate benefit of the students of North Carolina. This evening, Cleveland County Schools would like to recognize two folks in the Finance Department who have participated this year in the School Business Management Academy and have graduated, Kim McGinnis and Deanna McLean, if you would come forward, please. These two ladies participated in the School Business Management Academy Manager Program. They completed 24 courses over the past year in areas of accounting, financial management, law, and legal responsibilities, and including school business operations. It's quite an accomplishment. I think they deserve a hand.
Yeah, you gotta get in the middle.
All right, here we go. One, two, three.
Good job.
It would normally take this time to recognize any principals or teachers or assistants that we might have, but I think they all left with their singers. So before we move on to adoption of the agenda, I wanted to cover a couple of items as far as the agenda goes, just as, maybe this'll help new folks out and be a refresher for the old board members. The way you get items on the agenda, I've got four ways listed. First is through committee. We have five committees. If there's something that needs to be discussed, running that through committee first and giving staff a chance to gather information so that that can be properly discussed, that's the best way. The second is you can contact the Chair or the Superintendent by email or text or a phone call to get something put on the agenda. The third way is, as we start to adopt the agenda in the business meeting, it can be amended. And then the fourth way is after the meeting has already started, the agenda has been adopted, we're going through the meeting, if something should come up that needs to be added, a motion can be made to add something to the agenda then, but at that point it would require a supermajority of six votes. Amending the agenda at the beginning only requires five. So, anyone have any questions on that? All right, we got adoption of the agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I've got a question.
Oh, sorry.
I've got a question. I'd like to amend the agenda that we discuss and talk about our minutes, about how we keep them, keep them properly. I know we don't run a transcript in here, but we do need to have the minutes to where a person can understand what went on. And I'd like to, and all the board members needs to know that and go from there.
Okay, so you're making a motion to amend the agenda to add the discussion on the minutes. Where in the agenda?
We can do it at the minutes. It'd be fine with me, or at the end, just as long as we discuss it and the way on our, way our minutes is kept. And if that, I do not feel, my understanding this week, that the minutes was taken very late.
Hold on, before we get into discussion of it. So if it's all right with you, I'll say we put that before approval of the minutes. So 5.01 is approval of the minutes, we'll put it right before that.
Okay.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say it.
All right. Motion by Mr. Blanton, second by Mr. Gregg. Any discussion on the amendment itself? Does everyone understand the motion?
Are you gonna make it 5.101 to 5.02?
Whatever number we need to put on it, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it right before the amendment.
Yeah, 5.01 to 5.02.
Yeah, that'll be fine. All right, those in favor of the amendment, if you'd raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, that carries nine zero. Before we vote on the agenda as amended, I do need to switch two items. That's 11 and 12. So that'll put the administrative update at 11 and board member comments at 12. Those just got switched in the agenda. Does everyone understand that part? All right, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I got Mr. Fitch and Mr. Scholl's. There's a second. Any further discussion on the agenda? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. And that carries nine zero. All right. So next is our public participation. We do have five speakers signed up. That fits into our allotted time, so we'll move forward. First is Parents Against Bullying. I don't have a name, I'm not sure who that, I just have an organization name.
According to statistics compiled from several sources, to include the National Center of Education, the Bureau of Justice, and the National Education Association, 90% of students in grades four through eight having, report having been harassed or bullied. Over 160,000 students refused to go to school every day for fear of being bullied. 71% of students surveyed say that bullying is a problem. Over 10% of students that drop out of school do so for being repeatedly bullied. Statistics suggest that revenge due to bullying is the number-one motivator for school shootings in the United States. 86% of students surveyed said that other kids being bullied is the number-one reason that teenagers turn to lethal violence at school. Nearly 75% of school shootings have been linked to harassment and bullying. 87% of students surveyed report that bullying is the primary motivator of school shootings. According to the latest available statistics, North Carolina ranks 19th in the nation for bullying. That means other 18 other states have a worse bullying problem than North Carolina. Unfortunately, we do not have statistics for Cleveland County, because in Cleveland County, schools bullying is not reported as bullying. In Cleveland County schools, bullying is reported as whatever the principal wants to call it. Bullying is just lumped in with other misbehavior. To not report bullying as bullying is unacceptable, and it must be classified and reported as that bullying. In 2013, Cleveland County schools established a bullying task force. That task force was functional and effective, until when in 2021, for unclear reasons, the Cleveland County School Superintendent directed the bullying task force to stand down. As the statistics show, the effects of bullying can be catastrophic. To not have a bullying task force in Cleveland County schools is reprehensible, and it is negligent, and it demands immediate action. Without exception, every newly elected and re-elected member of this board promised to work to reinstate the bullying task force and to ensure Parents Against Bullying had representation on that task force. It's time to keep your promise. Otherwise, you'll be known as men that do not keep their word, and you are not trustworthy. Gentlemen, keep your promise. Get the bullying task force reinstated without any further delay, and demand that these principals report bullying as what it is, not what they want to report it as or what the superintendent wants to call it.
Next speaker is Nikki Melton.
I wanted to thank Mr. Blanton and Mr. Gregg for keeping their promise when they got elected, or re-elected for Mr. Blanton and Mr. Gregg for being there for my daughter, because last year, same thing with he happened, the bullying, I kept her out of school. And now, they have kept their promise and got the right people in contact with me so she could be put in a better school because of the school that she just started out putting, answering my phone calls. And now she's in a better school with Dr. Parker, which has called me back, and other people that is real nice and understanding and that can, my daughter's not healthy like other kids, and they understand that. Mr. Blanton understands that, he sees that. Mr. Gregg is just now learning it, and he understands that, and I'm glad that he's there and they're working together for my daughter. And Mr. Parker for, just, I love him because he stepped up when he didn't have to, and he stepped up and was there for my daughter. And Mr. Borders, he stepped up, and Dr. Fisher, he called me back and was there, and I thank them for calling me back, putting the right people where the place. I thank them for that, and I thank them for being there for my daughter and putting everything in the right place. 19th, we're having a meeting, and any of y'all want to come to it and be there at Kazer Elementary School and be there for my daughters, 5.04, y'all can be there. If you don't, then I'll see you a different time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nanette Lenhart.
Good evening. I'm gonna talk about bids, and I've just run across the agenda tonight, and I couldn't find all the information on all of the bids. And I think, as a Cleveland County taxpayer, that the public, taxpayer here in Cleveland County, they need to know who's getting the bid and winning the bid, and who are the other vendors that bid on these projects. So, let me see. The first one I want to talk about is, I believe it's called a visitor management system, it's in the agenda, and individualized student IDs. I see that there were three bids. ID of kids, school safe, and school pass. School safe ID won the bid, but then I see where they added $30,000-plus to it, because we request the ability to include, when needed, the smart dispensal components. And I'm like, that when-needed part threw a red flag. $30,000-plus dollars for an item that's used when needed. So anyway, and then on to that Burns High School elevator, which they, you know, you guys do show the bid for that, and it shows that Southern Elevator won that bid. And let's see, replace and upgrade cameras. And so bids were requested from all vendors listed on this NCDIT 204 times contract. CDWG won the bid. from all vendors listed on this NCDIT 204 times contract. CDWG won the bid. And then another bid was on Microsoft, three-year agreement. Bids were requested, and again, CDWG won that bid. Now, my question on that Microsoft is, it only shows $101,742, but it just says for the first year of that agreement. It's a three-year agreement. Are we paying $300,000 or $101? Okay, that is, thank you.
Next speaker is John Punisher.
A few things I'd like to address is that you don't speak to anyone who asks any kind of questions. It's been said by chairman that you have too much time to answer all the questions that anyone may ask. So I've got some suggestions. We have closed schools, three of them to be exact. I'd like a show of hands if y'all would like to use those schools, if they're still in Cleveland County domain with the Sheriff's Department, to be a training area or something of that nature, to where active shooting, things like that can be used in those empty schools, instead of having to call Charlotte or someone whose understanding of those active shooters in schools before it's too late. And I love this. So should I turn my back and talk to the camera? Because I can't get a show of hands or even just a remote, great idea, maybe we can think about it. I'm not asking for it to be put on the agenda tonight. I'm asking what we want to think about. May not be able to be done, having been talked to the sheriff.
Well, sir, to help you out, we don't have any information on what you're proposing, and I'm not lending my support. Personally, the others can say what they want, but I'm not lending my support to anything that I don't have details on. So, I mean, you're certainly welcome to contact me later. We can go through things, but...
And it's a suggestion. And it doesn't mean if you raise your hand, it has to be done. Just a raising of a hand to say, that could be something that we could look into. That could be an idea that we wouldn't have to wait for Charlotte's police department to come down for an active shooter in one of the schools.
We already do that training in Cleveland County schools.
When was it last conducted?
Last fall, at Washington Elementary.
With sheriffs.
We had all, we had all law enforcement agencies there.
So what is the agenda of the three schools being closed, or that are closed? Are they up for sale? Will they be reopened?
That's all in process.
I understand.
Our fifth speaker is Willie McIntosh.
Members of the board, if I don't run over 30 minutes. Anyway, I'm blessed to have the opportunity to come and speak to you about this tonight because this is very dear to me about school bullying. And I've talked to several members throughout different communities. And, you know, being a retired law enforcement officer, and of course, I've been in your spot too as a county official, and, you know, a lot of things are hard. You know, we have, as a cop, as you well know, as you well know, you know, we have to lock our relatives up. We have to lock friends up, you know, loved ones, everybody, you know. And I know you have a hard job. And politically, you have a hard job. But the thing of it is, what's right? And, you know, if somebody comes to your neighborhood and starts shooting up your neighborhood, you don't care who we know. You don't care whether our chief or elected official in the city of Cat is going to get reelected or not. You want something done. And that's all the people are wanting out here. They want to make sure that their children are not bullied and have, things happen like what happened to Uvalde, Texas. And we don't need that because it's too late then. And yes, we have the same type of people in our area that have guns, different type weapons and guns, and they have the same feelings. And these things could be spurred on to cause people, these young kids, to do things. So I hope that you would think about it. And as General brought up a good point a while ago about looking at things and maybe having some type of discussions of how things could be done, and let the parents and the people throughout the county understand why and why you're doing what you're doing or not doing, and just get everybody on the same accord. But the bottom line is, what can we do to make sure that our kids aren't bullied? What can we do to make sure the kids can feel safe going to school? And what can we do to make sure that the kids can feel like they belong and not get on the internet, start figuring out how to make guns and everything, try to shoot people or even stab people? So again, thank you for your time, and I hope that you will give me a call and anybody else a call that have, want to talk with you and don't have to rush it into 30 minutes. But again, thank you, and I hope you would take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh, and I apologize for not recognizing you as a former elected official earlier. All right, per the amended agenda, we have a discussion of our minutes. Mr. Blanton?
Yes. When, when, when I speak, I want the people to know, if they go back and look at the minutes, I want them to know what I said, whether it's closing down schools or whether it's the bullying task force or whatever. And this past, our past meeting, our meeting, our minutes did not have one word hardly. It had all the sugar-coated stuff, but it didn't have anything else in there of other discussions that was made. And I feel that if, if Ms. Bridges is going to take those minutes, those minutes shouldn't be changed around, or if that's what happened, I don't know. I asked for the original minutes because just as soon as I seen the minutes, I called and wanted to know what was, what was wrong. And then I, I just went down and read everybody's. Well, there wasn't hardly anybody's. Basically, on what they said, except for yours, Mr. Chair, and that was pretty accurate. And, but I just feel that our minutes ought to be held accurately. And the people out here is wanting to see this. And they can look at our, at our video, and they can see those minutes. But some people comes back and reads our minutes on our agenda on board docs, and they like to see exactly what was said, what was wrote down, and then they compare. And I'm also, we, because our meetings is tough for a lot of people to pull up due to their access internet service. And I'd like to see maybe that we switch to YouTube or something other like that. I'm hearing that it really puts out a good reception and everything. So anybody else want to say? But I want my minutes kept accurately. It don't have to be word for word, but if somebody looked at those minutes, they know what I said.
Before I call on the attorney for clarification, anyone else have anything?
No, I was, that was what I was going to do. I spoke with a colleague today that had some concern about the minutes, and I called the attorney, and I would like for the attorney to come up and give a synopsis of minutes and what they include, what they shouldn't include. And I think we need to make a decision tonight on, and I say that because I think we're getting into the point, and I said, I had, several months ago, I had a public in my board comment, I said a whole bunch. And I didn't expect our clerk to be able to record all of that. And I go back to my time serving as city council for eight years, and the mayor would go around and say, do you have a comment? You have a comment? We all comment. That was never put in our minutes. The county commission don't put comments in their minutes. And I think what we could open ourselves up to if we don't do these verbatim, is every council member upset about what was written because it wasn't verbatim. But if, Ms. Attorney, if you'll just explain the minutes, then I'll, I'll have more to say after that.
Sure. Thank, thank you for calling me up. I'll do a quick minute on minutes. Essentially, there's a, well, there's a standard for minutes by law that they must be quote unquote "full and accurate." Sounds simple enough, but it took the North Carolina Supreme Court to give us a little insight into what full and accurate actually means. And so, per that case law, the North Carolina Supreme Court explained that full and accurate requires a record of what was done at a meeting and not what was said by its members. So I think that's the biggest distinction. For minutes, the main goal is to record actions taken. So the vote is, you know, taken, that must be included. Who said what does not necessarily need to be put in. There's, in addition to the requirement for minutes, there's also, per some other case law, you can glean that you must also have what's called a general account. And so that's where you get into a little bit more discretion of what's included or what's not included. But again, it's consistently held that it's a brief description of what took place and not who said what. So, for example, the board discussed the gym floor at Burns Middle School, period. Not, the board discussed the gym floor at Burns Middle School, and Mr. Shores thought it was terrible, and Mr. Green thought it was great, and Mr. Humphries thought it was too expensive, you know. It, that wouldn't need to be included. It would just be a general description of the discussion. So while I said there is a little discretion in what should be included in that general account, my advice to the board is that we just remain consistent. And so, you were addressing board member comments specifically. And in the past, we've included two or three sentences as a summary of what each board member said, and not a transcript of sorts, at least since my time serving as board council. So that's why when there was a large number, you know, large number of sentences for each board member, when I revised the minutes, condensed it down to just a couple sentences for each person. It was not censored on content or anything of the like, but more just to give a brief description of what was said, a brief description of, of the discussion, not who said what and in what detail.
So thoughts, statements, opinions, comments made by board members and board member comments are simply that? Is that correct?
That's right.
They are not actions of the board?
Correct. So if, if people are wanting to see everything that was said, the video is, is the best way to do that.
And to get the board docs, you have to have a computer that would get you to the video as well.
That's right.
I'm just trying to keep us from having to get, she's either going to have to do it verbatim to make everybody happy, or, and I know in the past, I've never sat on the board where comments were, they're not part of a board action. They're just comments. And, you know, if we look at it going back before some of us were elected, we never had board comments. The chair has graciously allowed that to happen. I remember some board members used to have to go down there and speak for three minutes. And...
Go ahead and call my name, isn't it?
No, no, I don't do that. I'm, I'm going to try to be professional about this. And with that said, I would just like to make a motion that we instruct our, our clerk to not include any, as far as board comments, to include anything in the minutes.
It's not required. I think all that would be required would just be board member comments.
Okay. I just think we're going to get, get into weeds.
Mr. Chairman, I thought it's kind of like a comment.
Hold on just a second.
Got a motion on the floor.
We've got a motion on the floor. And I want to be sure I understand is, when we're preparing the minutes, and I want to get it straight, that Dr. Fisher is secretary of the board. All that's done under his responsibility. So when it comes to the board member comment section, you're saying no verbiage there, just a list of who made comment or nothing?
Not, just say board comments, period. That way we keep, we stay out of, everybody say, you know, I made a recommendation, I mean, I made some, a speech a while back. That was a lot, but I wasn't all upset about it because every word of it wasn't in there.
All right. So does everyone understand the motion? And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. So I got a motion by Mr. Shores and a second by Mr. Humphries to omit, in the board member comment section, I'll just list that we had board member comments. All right. Mr. Williams, you need to keep it quiet or you'll be asked to leave. Okay. Well, that's three times you've interrupted, and I'm trying to listen. You know, I gave you two for free, so stop. Just stop. Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Spurley.
So just from my understanding, you're, you're saying in the minutes, there will be comments listed, but not where they came from?
No, there won't be, won't be anything there.
No comments at all?
Okay.
So in other, in other words, suggestions of things that we need to do are not going to be included in the minutes. Is that what you're saying? We're just going to deal away with the minutes completely?
No, not doing away with the minutes.
Because the board wants lawful, what we have to report by law.
But some of the things that are said in those minutes are actually suggestions.
Right.
They're not just comments.
I understand that.
So what do you got, suggestions? What would we do with the suggestions?
I'm not saying we can have board comments.
Right.
He is chair, could eliminate that, period. And we couldn't have nothing to say. I'm just saying to help our, from everybody getting in the mud about, you didn't put this word, you didn't put that word, you didn't put that word. I've never sat on a board that did that. It's not required by law to do that.
So, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
So I, I do agree with, like, if there's a suggestion made, it, it probably needs to be put in the minutes so that it doesn't get lost. But I can, if I make a suggestion, I can care less if my name's beside of it. I'm, I'm, I'm in this for the team, not for me.
That's awesome.
So, so if there's a suggestion, if I make a suggestion, then I, I would recommend it be put in the comments. You know, this, it's suggested that, that we look into this, but I don't care anything about my name being beside of it because it's, it's a, it's a committee function, not a, not a Mr. Spurley function.
Mr. Chair, if I may interject briefly at your discretion?
Go ahead, Ms. Spurley.
Just some insight. A suggestion made during board member comments would not be considered an action item. However, during the meeting itself, if a motion is put on the floor and a subsequent second and discussion was had, that would in fact be an action item and would in fact be included in the minutes. So just super thoughtful.
But wouldn't it be important to have that listed so that if we came back at a later time, we could say that it had been suggested? And we could prove that it had been suggested prior to?
I'm just simply suggesting that the suggestion be brought up in the form of a motion during the, the content of the meeting as opposed to mentioned during board member comments. If it's something that is important enough that you want it recorded, to guarantee that it's recorded, if it's done in the form of a motion, that would, would guarantee that it would be an action item that would in fact make it to the minutes.
Recognize Mr. Humphries, he's sat patiently.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is kind of like a rerun. We've, we've had this exact same discussion two years ago. So the minutes used to be kept transcript wise. And so, two things. One is that is absolutely not required by law. Anybody in here that can read the general statutes is welcome to go read them. Number two, from the board members, there's board member education opportunities. The North Carolina School Board Association has 60 minutes on minutes, says exactly what our attorney just said. Suggestions are not going to disappear into the ether because they're not written into the minutes. If a suggestion is made, we're all adults, we hear it. We're not going to have magic memory loss. So, and it will get referred to a committee. I mean, that's what the committees are for. You know, so I support the motion for that reason. We're just, we were running over the same ground we've tread upon before for no apparent reason, trying to pick nets.
Mr. Blanton, before I call on you, I want to give others that hadn't had a chance to speak. I want to give others that hadn't had a chance to speak. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I'll just say a few words. Based on what I'm hearing, you know, you're wanting suggestions, but you're not wanting all the minutes. It can't be, it's going to be one way or the other. You're going to have to put everything or not put anything. Because if I start putting, "Well, this is a suggestion, so we got to put it," then that's up to Ms. Bridges, what she takes as a suggestion, what's just noise. So, I guess the motion is that we either do it or we don't. I don't think you can start saying, "We'll do this, we'll do that." I think it has to be all or nothing.
Mr. Taylor, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Blant.
Okay. Mr. Blant?
Yes. Well, I'm going back, I got elected by the people. And when I make my statements, I have my facts together when I make my statements. And if it don't, if it don't get put in the minutes, it's just like our committees. You said, "Bring it to the committee." We had our committee meeting. There was not one minute kept of what was said on the Capitol Outlay. It was brought up about the discussion about the gym floors. I tried to bring that up two meetings, at our last meeting. I was told I had to wait, so I brought it up in the committee, and there was not one word said in the minutes that we discussed it. Is, am I, did you read the minutes of the operation? Did you see anything in there that I brought up in discussion? Okay. Well, how, how's it going to get if it's not on the agenda and it's not in the minutes? If I read, here I am, voting up here for a set of minutes that's not accurate. I'm voting for a set of minutes that's not accurate, that I'm saying everything is okay. Well, my book, him gym floors ain't okay.
Mr. Chair.
But that's my thing.
You'll see in this agenda, if it's the minutes of the board meeting, at the subsequent meeting, you have the opportunity, per the standard agenda, to approve the minutes or not, and you may also ask...
But the public's not going to know.
But you'll have the opportunity to make an amendment to the minutes if something is missing that you deemed should be included and leave it to the board to vote for that. If it's for the committees, there's an opportunity to do that too.
We say our committees is not video, so they can't go back to the video and look at it.
But after the committee report is read, if an amendment needed to be made to the committee report?
Okay. Can I disapprove that then when we get to the committee, then if it's not, not wrote in there? Will I be able to object that then?
After the committee report is read, upon receiving recognition from the chair, you can state that such and such discussion was not apparent on the report and suggested that be included. And that would be an action item, so that would be reported in the board meeting minutes.
Okay. I'm against it anyway, so.
Mr. Taylor, one last thing. Well, I'm a little torn on this. I hate having a motion that states specifically what we're going to put in minutes or not because that's fluid. It could change from month to month. But we're all adults in here, and we all know that board member comments has become a campaign tile. This is a meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Education to dispense of business of the Cleveland County school system. It's not a campaign rally for me or anybody else up here. And, you know, if you want to do that, you're welcome to go out to the front steps, you're welcome to rent the fairgrounds, do whatever you want to do to have a campaign rally. That's not what this meeting is for, is to take action so that the superintendent and his staff can execute the policies and the decisions that we make up here as a board. It's that simple. You know, with social media and all these other things out here, if you've got something to say, there's plenty of ways to get it to the public. We've got the committee system. I know there's people trying to fight the committee system, and that's fine, you can keep trying to fight it. But we're going to have committees until five people on this board to say we're not going to. And right now, that's what the board is elected to do, and they've elected me chair, and that's what we're going to proceed on. The committee minutes are published, they're on board docs, folks can read that. We don't have, and you can argue about time all you want to, but we don't have time to spoon-feed everything in this meeting, or we're going to have six-hour meetings every month. And it's just not worth it. So, I'm looking for a way to reword this motion.
My motion didn't say, my motion said, it didn't say to make it fluid. My motion just said that when it comes to that part, board members made comments, period.
Okay.
I didn't say to let it be fluid. That's what I'm trying to get away from.
You're trying to get away from, okay. Any other comments on the motion on the floor? So the motion on the floor is to, and the board member, in the minutes, when it comes to board member comments, it's just shown that we had board member comments, and that's it. Everybody understand the motion? Those in favor of the motion as stated, if you'd raise your hand? Those opposed? So that motion carries seven to two. Now we get to approve the minutes. So we have the minutes of the December 12th, 2022 business session. That is the only section we've got. What's the pleasure of the board?
Most approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor. Motion by Mr. Fitch, second by Mr. Taylor. Any questions or discussion on the minutes? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Any opposed? All right. That carries six to three. First committee report is finance and personnel. Mr. Shores?
January the 5th, Finance Personnel Committee met. Vince Quinn from Anderson Smith &amp; White was recognized to present the district's yearly external audit. Mr. Quinn thanked the district and the finance team for their continued good work. Mr. Quinn highlighted pages 14, 15, and 21 in the financial highlights section, and the pages 69, 71, and 74 in the compliance section. In conclusion from the audit reports, there was no findings related to the financial statements of any of the programs that were tested as a major. Mr. Quinn noted that the federal programs tested, including the special education cluster, the coronavirus relief fund, the education stabilization fund, and Head Start. The state program tested was the state's public school fund. Mr. Quinn was able to answer questions about the district's fund balance and the difference between assigned and unassigned fund balance. Rob McDaniel presented the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. This report is done annually by the finance team, submitted to the local government commission and posted on our website. Information in the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report supports the annual audit and adds information about the Cleveland County and Cleveland County schools. Three requests for purchases were presented to the committee. Mr. Weiss presented the request to purchase 168 cameras for a total of $133,948.78. These cameras were written into the district's schools' grants. Mr. Weiss also requested approval of the district's Microsoft renewal contract. This is a three-year contract that is renewed annually, meaning the district can opt out after each year. The three-year contract simply locks in the price for the district for three years. The total amount of the contract is $100,742, 33,000, 914 annually. The final request came from Dr. Scholl and was for the purchase of visitor management system. This is also included in the safe schools' grant proposal. Dr. Scholl bid this project out using the Rubik to evaluate various system options and features. Dr. Scholl recommended a contract with School Safe ID for an amount that not exceed $130,289.85. The committee unanimously supported all three recommendations, and the recommendations were presented to the full board for tonight's approval. Dr. Jennifer Wampler and Wendy Finch provided an update on Cleveland County Schools' G E T program. This program was started to grow internal EC teachers. Each particular teacher is assigned a support colleague. The district recommendation to the committee was to pay 500 stipend per semester to each of the G E T support colleague. The committee unanimously supported this recommendation, and the recommendations were presented for the full board of approval. Dr. Fisher provided a brief ESTR fund update. As part of the update, Dr. Fisher provided a P R C chart created by Donna Piercy that highlighted each P C R, P R C, excuse me, P R C included with the ESTR funds. Dr. Fisher also reviewed the district's strategic plan and discussed planning opportunities for the 2023, 2024 budget. The committee discussed calendar options for 2023, '24 school year. All three options were discussed in depth. The committee had mixed feelings about the potential calendars for 2023, 2024. Additional discussion will follow in future meetings.
Can, wait, just a minute. I've got something going on over here, I can't hear. Somebody's playing something.
Yeah, can we get that turned off?
As a matter of new business, Dr. Fisher presented information from the district's 22, '23 budget proposal regarding the actual cost of salary increases to the district's budget. Salary increases were part of the state's biennial budget passed in 2001. Raises for the 2022, '23 school year created an approximately 2.2 million unfunded shortfall. These additional costs combined with the decrease in cash flow to the district has created budget challenges for the district moving forward. The committee entered in the closed session to discuss the personnel issue. With no new business, the meeting was adjourned. Next meeting will be February 2nd, 2000, February 2nd, 2023 at 12:00 noon. Mr. Chair, if I could just say a little bit further. I don't know how many noticed, but in 2021, in 2000, excuse me, 2020, 2021, our budget was $31,700,000.
That's county.
County, yes. In 2021, '22, our budget was cut down to 29.7 million. One of the reasons for this was the county commissioners wanted us to pay school certified staff a supplement, which I agree with that, but we had to take 1.7 million dollars out of our capital budget because in the past, we had been budgeting for repairs and stuff like that and additional 1.7. But they decided to take this money and put it into an escrow fund, so we weren't able to budget that money. And I just want to give you some thoughts because, in my opinion, this board is going to have to make some tough decisions soon. Because based on what the state has done to us and mandated that we do a $15 an hour raise, salary increases for locally paid certified county school employees was an additional Salary increase for locally paid classified Cleveland County schools was $664,933. Social Security and retirement was $372,343. Hospitalization, the cost of interest and all that was $200,209. So, we were, our balance, fund balance, we had to go into fund balance this year because of the supplements and because of basically inflation. Our fuel budget is already over, over, based on the cost of fuel. And we have basically been cut money to give raises. And I wanted to give those raises, but what I say by that, luckily, Dr. Fisher, through attrition, through attrition, let's make that clear, through attrition, we were able to only have to go into our fund balance and take $800,000 because we had several employees leave, and we didn't fill those positions. So, but as we keep going forward, things cost. Our budget's not going up, but inflation is. So I just wanted to put that out for you to start thinking we're going to have to make some hard decisions before too long because you can't keep growing and keep spending if you don't have the money. Thank you.
Before we move forward, Dr. Fisher, I need to clarify one thing in the finance committee report on the Microsoft renewal contract. It was my understanding that was 101,000 per year, or is that for the three years total?
One year.
One year?
Yeah.
Okay. So we need to correct that part in the finance committee report. So it's not 33,000 annually, it's 101,000 annually? Everybody get that? Okay. We'll be voting on that here shortly, so.
I got one question in there.
On the finance report?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Quinn, normally, he came and spoke to the whole board when it came to our whole thing on our audit report. In the past, they've always come before the whole board when they brought that out instead of just going to the committee. Because, like I say, unless you go through everything, he usually went down through and to the whole board in the past. Why did we change and take it away from a whole board hearing about our audit and everything? Because of the committees?
That's the main thing. It's presented to the committee. You do have a full report. There's nothing for the board to take action on. An audit report is just that. Whether we vote to accept it or not, it's their report.
Okay. All right.
First item of action is the personnel report. This does include the personnel report and the substitute list. What's the pleasure of the board?
Most approve.
Motion by Mr. Fitch?
Second.
Second by Mr. Humphries.
I have a question on our personnel.
Okay. Just be careful.
Okay. I will. I'll be careful.
Okay. What's your question?
Had a call that come March 31st, we are going to lose ROTC from Crest High School if we don't get an employee hired. It has to be a certified Air Force person, I'm sure of that. I don't know, Dr. Fisher might could answer this, but somebody needs, we need to step to the plate because if we lose it, we will not get it back because they are a waiting list. They're a waiting list for schools to get ROTC. We'd probably dropped about 300 in line, and we'd never get it back. And I was told last week, ROTC, if you want to go to Clemson School, you can go on a full ride to Clemson if you're in ROTC. So...
Let's let Dr. Fisher answer that.
Mr. Quinn, members of the board, the ROTC position is unique in terms of, you know, we have been actively looking at that. And I know, you know, it sounds like what Mr. Blant says, that someone on our team is not doing our due diligence and doing what we can. We're out there looking, and, you know, we can't just hire anybody. There are certain qualities that must be met, and they have the right of refusal on that. That's not a, you know, obviously, it's a Cleveland County Schools' position, and we're trying to do that, but, you know, from our end, we're at a loss because of the qualifications that it takes to be at that position.
Yeah. So that can be overruled by the ROTC folks?
Of who you are, yes, I think so.
It's legislative dictated by that. It's not, we just can't hire new teachers and put them in that ROTC position. That is not something that we can control.
Okay. All right.
We battled that for a while. This is not a new issue.
Well, maybe somebody will see it and that we need that because that would be bad for us to lose ROTC out of our school system. That just, it'd be hard.
How many do we need? One person?
One person. We've been looking for one person for quite a while, is that correct? We just hired one at Burns, I believe, or in the process of hiring one at Burns. But, you know, that, it is very challenging to find employee. I just want to make it clear, you know, because it sounds like that somebody has dropped the ball on our end, and that's just not the case. Our folks have been diligent in pursuing that. It's just if nobody applies, and nobody applies is eligible for that position, then we're in a, we're in a little bit of a loss.
March 31st is the last day. In other words, we lose it come March 31st.
We've done, we've done some pretty innovative things, speaking ROTC and doing that, but we've done some pretty innovative things over the years to keep our enrollment in ROTC where it need to be. Because if you have over 1,000 kids, you have to have 100 ROTC students, and we've been pretty innovative over the years, especially at Crest, to find ROTC students and to keep that program enrolled. But right now, as far as instructor, you have to have two instructors. We've worked with some folks that are retired. We can't keep somebody from non-retiring, but we're in a predicament with that.
Mr. Blant, I will agree with you, and I just want to add one thing, how hard it is getting our people out. We have five EC openings we can't fill. I mean, just trying to find people is rough these days. I mean, and trust me, they are, Ms. Fitch and all are working to try to find some EC teachers.
Dr. Fisher?
Dr. Fisher, Mr. Chair.
Is it related to the?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, Dr. Fisher, where do we have ROTC programs at currently?
Burns High School, Crest High School.
Okay, we don't have one at Shelby currently.
That's correct. Our Shelby students that are in ROTC program, they go to Burn, they go to Crest.
They go to Crest.
Or to the Air Force out at the, at the, at the Air Force.
Can I add something, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Very quickly. Being prior military, I'm all for having ROTC. Love the idea, but I actually looked into being an ROTC instructor and, and to, to make his, Dr. Fisher's point, it, it's got to be, if it's an Air Force program, it's got to be somebody that has retired from the Air Force. So that's, that, that makes your selection very small. And then it's got to be a specific rank for that specific position. You have to have an NCO, you have to have a commander. So, so the, the pickings for those positions are, are, it, it, it's like a needle in the haystack a lot of times, so.
And the pay's not the best.
And it's not. That's right.
That's why rural districts have a lot of time. You see a lot of, of opportunity in some of your bigger districts where people have, you have more people living, you have a, a, a bigger pool to choose from, but in a small rural district with that, with, with that type of specification, it is, it is a challenge.
Any other questions on the personnel?
Program. So if, if we were losing because we don't hire someone, what is the process of reinstating that program back at the school? Let me clarify, Mr. Bridges, and say, you know, again, we don't hire one. I know, I know what you're meaning, that we're, you know, we're doing everything, but I want, I want to be clear, it's like, it's not, we're making a choice not to hire one, it's just nobody's to be hired. So we have looked into adding programs before and we've, we've really met with the ROTC about adding programs at other high schools and as Mr. Blanton said, there is a, a long waiting list. It's my understanding, and I don't want to be quoted on this, but it's my understanding that you would go back into that waiting list and have to reapply and that is quite a long list of, of doing that. It's been a while, probably about eight or 10 years since we've really seriously done the application and moved forward with that at some of our other schools, but it was because the, the waiting list was extremely long. So we've done everything we can and, you know, our, our biggest issue for years was student enrollment at, at those schools, but now it turns into staffing. So to answer your question, I think we would go back into that, have to go back through that regulation. There may be, we may be expedited, you know, to, to do that, but I'm not sure.
Any other questions on personnel? All right. We have a motion by Mr. Fitch, second by Mr. Humphries. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Any opposed? Carries nine zero. We have the Growing Excellent Teachers Supplement. This is our internal program for growing some EC teachers and each student in that program has a support colleague, a mentor, if you will, and this action will provide a five hundred dollar per semester bonus to those existing EC teachers that are providing support to the new folks. So that comes from committee recommended for approval. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? Carries nine zero. The Microsoft Renewal, this includes Windows Office, Windows Server, includes any updates that happen over the next three years. This is with CDWG and it's for a hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars annually. Comes from committee recommended for approval. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. Next is cameras. This is for Crest High, Kings Mountain Middle School and Shelby Middle, consists of a hundred and sixty-eight cameras. This is paid for with the safety grant we received this past budget year. Again, CDWG has the winning bid and that is for a total of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Comes from committee recommended for approval. Any questions or discussion?
Of course.
Mr. Spurrier.
Does this system have capability of like recording?
As I understand, yes. The, the images are recorded, I don't know how long. Yeah, come on down, Mr. You just thought you were going to hide in the back office.
I think we need to be, just as a cautionary tale, you know, this is, does involve school security, school safety, so we need to tread lightly on what's shared in open session. It's, this will be an opportunity at some point that we need to go in closed session to share, you know, the details there, but we just need to, to be mindful of, of school security and school safety protocols.
Your question was if it has the capability of recording. It does, it does have capability of recording and can be configured in multiple ways to extend the length of the recording that is on the cameras, per camera. So I don't know if that answers your question enough. Yes.
That's probably detailed enough. Okay. Any other questions on that?
Does it hold the footage as long as we want to keep it or do we have to put it over on something else?
That would depend on how long you wanted to keep it.
Might want to keep it for a long time.
You'd probably have to put it somewhere else.
You know, these things last.
A long time, sir.
I seen Matlock today and he's working on a case ten years old. Get a little humor in here.
This, this comes from committee recommended for approval. Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. One more for finance. This is the visitor management system. Again, this is through School Safe ID. And is this coming out of the safety grant also? I don't. Dr. Scholl's hiding in the, did somebody say yes? Okay, this is coming out of the safety grant also and the total for that is one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Comes from committee recommended for approval. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Blanton?
I approve.
Oh, okay. Any, any questions? All right, those in favor? All right, that carries nine zero. Educational programs, Mr. Humphries.
So the education program committee met on January the sixth. Dr. Hundle introduced the instructional team to the new committee members. In an attempt to bring all committee members up to speed, members of the instructional team provided a brief, brief overview of each person's areas. These updates included most all instructional areas. Committee members were able to ask specific questions related to the, to the diverse instructional services provided in Cleveland County schools. Paula Peeler presented information to the education program committee about the district's Head Start program. Included in this presentation, Mrs. Peeler highlighted specific Head Start documentation that needs board approval and that's on the agenda tonight. The committee unanimously supported the Head Start documentation and as I said, this will be presented tonight. I spoke with the committee about the district's strategic plan and the education program goals. I requested that the board consider adding a STEM goal to the district's plan. This will be discussed in more detail at the board work session on Friday, the twentieth. And the next educations program committee will be Friday, February the third at eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Humphries. We have one action item in educational programs, that's approval of the Head Start documentation. This includes the months of September, October and November of two thousand twenty-two and it is recommended from committee for approval. Any question on the Head Start document? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? And that carries nine zero.
Did, I, did I understand him, we're going to have our workshop and, because I've got some things I need to bring out, but it'd be better in the workshop?
Yes, the workshop's on the twentieth.
Okay.
And if y'all remind me, I'll announce that at the end. I've got it written down. Operations, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. The January sixth operations committee meeting was called to order. Dr. Jennifer Wampler and Chip Childers provided the capital projects report to the committee. This report is attached to the board's January ninth agenda as an informational item. Dr. Wampler presented bid information for the Burns High School elevator project. Three bids were received and Southern Elevator Company was the lowest bidder. The committee discussed this project and unanimously, unanimously supported accepting the bid of two hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars that included a contingency of ten thousand dollars. This will be an action item at tonight's meeting. This project is scheduled to be paid with capital escrow funds. The committee was presented with a list of items to be considered surplus. Items are from the maintenance department and CTE. The committee supported the recommendation to consider these items as surplus. The list will be, will be presented to the full board for consideration tonight. Mr. Chip Childers provided a general maintenance update to the committee. Including in his update was information on recent issues related to the cold weather we had back over the Christmas holiday. The committee expressed appreciation for the work done by the maintenance department team. Dr. Wampler provided an update on the progress being made on the auditoriums. Lots of focus are being, have been made on lane block and machinery work. Recent weather conditions have been a challenge. Mr. Daniel Sherman provided an update on the MEP and HVAC projects at our four high schools. Phase one is underway with the, with noticeable progress being made at Crest and Burns High School. Dr. Stephen Fisher provided a brief update on the Shelby High School Fieldhouse project. And in new business, transportation director David Pless mentioned the closure of Crest Road for an approximate period of two weeks due to improvements being made by Department of Transportation. Schools were provided, schools have provided messaging to parents via phone and social media. Also diesel was, was reported as still high and getting bus parts is still a challenge. With no new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next operations committee meeting is scheduled for Friday, February third at nine o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We have two action items out of operations. First is the surplus items. These are from our maintenance department and CTE. This comes from committee recommended for approval. Any questions on the surplus item? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. Next we have the Burns elevator bid. Again, this is with Southern Elevator Company. The total is two hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and includes a ten thousand dollar contingency and is basically replaces all the guts of the elevator, the cabin, the hydraulics, cables, everything but the shaft. This comes from committee recommended for approval. Any questions or discussion?
I thought, my understanding that we were, we was changing the shaft because it had a single shaft and we're going to a double.
Well, what I mean by shaft is the brick on the outside.
Okay, got you.
We're not having to pour footings or.
Yeah, okay, got you.
Put a new roof on or anything. But the whole guts get changed. Any other questions? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand? That carries nine zero. Policy committee, Mr.
Well, I want to go back on that. Back to the capital. That's where I brought up about our gym floors of the issues and we're not, by, by what the company says, that we're going to have to keep the heating and air, keep the humidity regulated in that gym, you know, for those, for those floors to stay stable and not buck. Well, those, those gyms, it was fifty years old and they never did have no heat and air. Why are we having, why are we going to have issues with this bucking when we didn't have it before because basically we went back with the same ordeal and why are they not going to stand responsible for those floors? I've still been all over the country and I hadn't seen expansion joints in gym floors, but are we going to have these issues forever? Because I noticed in all these gyms, I've been watching ballgames since I broke my hip, everyone I've got paint on and they use that for an excuse that it was allowing the moisture or humidity to get in. That, that was one of the things because of the paint, it's not as dried as much there as it was elsewhere. And every floor I see, when I turn the TV on, gym floor, it's got paint on it. It's got the symbols.
Well, I, I'll just have to say I disagree with your assessment that we have issues on our gym floors. The gym floors are fine.
They're bucking at Burn High School.
Well, the definition of bucking, now when you say that, people are going to think the things are so warped that you can't do anything on there. We've been having basketball games, volleyball games, wrestling matches. There's been no issue with the floors at Burns.
So what about sliding the seats in and out? Have you looked under them? Were it, were it cut the flooring?
I haven't seen it personally.
Okay.
But you have to understand, you, you should know that wood today, and I don't like this either, wood today is not the same as it was fifty years ago. They're doing this fast growth wood, they're harvesting it quicker, processing it differently, and it just behaves differently. I don't like it either because you have trim problems happening in people's houses and they don't understand that. So expansion joints are required, that's what the company did and that's what they required to certify and warranty the floor. So I don't.
When you say expansion joints, you're not talking about a bridge expansion joint? You're talking about a thin.
No, they're, they're an eighth inch or less.
Or a quarter.
They're not a quarter. Because the way they, I, I did call and ask that question this morning, the way they make those expansion joints is it's quite simple. They take a, a roll of weed eater string and put it in the groove of the next board and that, most weed eater string, I think the thickest you can get is ninety thousandths. So that's three thirty seconds of an inch. It's not even an eighth and that's, that's the difference. And it's just, you're not going to see that on TV either. So any other questions on operations report? All right, policy report, Mr. Humphries.
The policy committee met on January the third. An overview of the purpose of the policy committee and the importance of the general statutes included in one fifteen C was presented. Mrs. Sink highlighted the roles of the school principal, superintendent and board members. She focused on the responsibilities of the board members and their reliance on board policy and general statute to protect the board and the school system. Dr. Fisher provided a brief overview of the district's strategic plan, mission and vision. Dr. Fisher focused on the board's goals and the policy section of the strategic plan. Goal number one from last year has been accomplished, or the previous plan. Goals two and three are being met but need to stay as part of the plan because of the continuous process improvement part of the content. The committee discussed a potential new goal citing the need for an ongoing review of board policy. And again, that could, that'll be discussed more at the, at the workshop. Dr. Fisher highlighted the policies that will be on the agenda for the January ninth Board of Education meeting and outlined a process for policies to gain board approval. This includes discussion and recommendation for the policy committee, a first read by the full board and at a minimum, a second and final read prior to approval. In some cases, policies will have multiple reads prior to approval. As a matter of new business, Dr. Fisher highlighted the three versions of the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar that are posted on the district website. Dr. Fisher briefly explained the difference between the three versions. Dr. Fisher stated that the teacher advisory committee, principal advisory committee recommended version three. The calendars are out on the website for public comment and input. Brief discussion was held about the adherence to the calendar law alignment to the community college and the need to create the best academic calendar possible. Dr. Fisher reminded the committee that although it's great to get the input, the approval of the school calendar is ultimately the board's decision. And the next policy committee meeting is Tuesday, January the twenty-third, or excuse me, January the thirty-first at noon.
Thank you, Mr. Humphries. There are nine policies on the agenda for approval. I'll read those into the record. Policy forty-one hundred is age requirements. Thirty-six twenty, extracurricular activities. Thirty-four twenty is school promotion and accountability. Thirty-four sixty is graduation requirements. Forty fifty is children of military families. Forty-seven hundred is student records. 4700 is student records. 4400 is attendance. 4110 is immunization and health requirements for school admission. And 4140 is student foreign exchange program. So, all of those have been through the first read and come from the Policy Committee recommended for approval. Any questions or comments? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand, and that carries 9-0. Next, the Safety Committee, Mr. Fitch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. January 3rd meeting of the Safety Committee was called to order. School Resource Officer Mike Chapman of the Shelby Place Department introduced Stop the Bleed, a national preventive program. The committee agreed for Greg Scholl, David Pless, and Rodney Borders, and Sandy Hamrick to review the presentation and work with Officer Chapman and the Shelby PD to develop an appropriate plan for consideration. Dr. Greg Scholl gave an overview of the plans for the visitor management solution and providing identification badges to students. Dr. Scholl will present the purchasing aspects to the Finance Committee to take to the board for consideration at the January 9th meeting. The safety grant funds for the project have already been awarded to the school district. Each agency represented had an opportunity to provide updates. Rodney Borders updated the committee on the district's continued efforts to improve student discipline and academics. Dr. Greg Scholl praised the local law enforcement agencies for their continued support. Sandy Hamrick expressed her appreciation for the communication between departments and law enforcement assisting students and families. David Pless mentioned the closure of Crest Road for an approximately period of two weeks due to improvements. Schools have provided messaging to parents via phone and social media. With no other new business, the meeting was adjourned. The next Safety Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 31st at 12:00 noon.
And I will just add that since it's been mentioned twice, that Crest Road was reopened today. So, all that work's done and maybe traffic will be back to normal tomorrow. Superintendent's update, Dr. Fisher, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, just a few things. Superintendent's update tonight, just got a couple I'll read. Don't even have anything on the screen. Just so you know, we had a great beginning of the second semester. As you know, the second semester started Thursday of last week. So, we've had a couple days in the second semester. We've had a good start of the second semester. Unfortunately, this morning, we did wake up to some power issues and some internet issues in some of our schools. So, we had to dismiss Bowling Springs Elementary earlier today. It's my understanding, though, that power has been restored. So, we anticipate a normal school day tomorrow. It was mentioned in the committee report, and Chip Childers is here. I want to just applaud the efforts of our maintenance team, especially over the Christmas break. We did have some water issues, as was stated, because of extreme cold. But our team resolved those issues quickly and didn't let a small issue become a major issue. Just as a reminder, it was said earlier again, that the board's work session is scheduled for Friday, January 20th. And would like to conclude my updates with just our appreciation from the staff of Cleveland County Schools. We appreciate your service. January is Board of Education Appreciation Month, and so we appreciate what you do every day, the service you give, just doing little things. They mean a lot to staff. Had the opportunity, and you had the opportunity to visit Township III in Grover Elementary this morning. You don't know how important that is when you have the opportunity to visit schools in our board's school visits, your 10 functions. That means a lot for you supporting what's happening with our students, schools, and in our community. So, for Cleveland County Schools, we appreciate what you do, appreciate you serving this wonderful community every day as a member of the Board of Education. So, that's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Fisher? All righty. Board member comments. Mr. Sperling, do you have anything?
First of all, I'd like to say what a pleasure it was to hear the choir. I think that was... It's good to see something good every once in a while like that. The second thing I would like to say, and we had several people make comments about bullying, and that is one thing that I campaigned on and do want to bring in front of the board soon, and will hope that we all will look at bullying in a different light. And the third thing, a gentleman asked about the buildings and using them for different purposes and things like that. I am all about repurchasing things, not just willy-nilly. I do think there needs to be a plan. I do want to tell people that there are things that go on in our community, the Sheriff's Office, the school board, the county commissioners, that aren't public knowledge, especially at the Sheriff's Office. They do training that not everybody knows about because they don't want bad guy to know about it. So, just keep that in mind. I will pledge again that I am doing this for the betterment of our community. And I will say, if there's things that people... Mr. Blanton said, "We want to put things on YouTube." I do want people to know that I'm available and I want to hear opinions. I do want, I will do want the public to have every opportunity to see what the board does as a whole. I am not big on campaigning in the committee or on the board, but I do want the board, I do want the community to see us as a board, not as an individual, and the things that we can accomplish together. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Mr. Fitch?
Yeah, I'd just like to say a few words about what was going on at Grover Elementary School this morning. A lot of good things going on down there. It's amazing what they've done with that media center. It was something to see. And all of those have been done with grants and some donations from the community. And it's really good to see the community down there rally around that school. I think Selene's had actually done an outside classroom, which was really amazing to see and those folks to use. And I'd also like to just say a comment about the gentleman talking about the active shooter or that type of stuff. As member of the Sheriff's Office since 1995, we have been doing active shooting training ever since Columbine. It is not publicized to say, but we in Cleveland County law enforcement take that very seriously. And there's a lot of good things and a lot of good training going on. And I can say that I think Cleveland County is heads above a lot of counties in their training for active shooter.
Mr. Blanton?
Well, it's going to take me just a little bit. I guess I'm going to have to say it here because it's not going to be in the minutes. We voted against that a while ago. I want to say first that we had a very good visit at Number Three today. They are working very hard down there. And their scores is definitely going to improve with the way they're going at it down there. I was really shocked when I seen what was going on. So, I want to really appreciate what they're doing, but I want to make sure that we're setting goals to reach. You know, we set a goal for all these sports. And we do a lot of winning in Cleveland County in sports, all sports. We're at the top. I want to see us go to the top in our academics. I want to see us go to the top. We're actually sitting about 38th in the state. I got those numbers yesterday from the state, not yesterday, excuse me, Friday. Today's Monday. I'm sort of lost since I've been laying up in the bed for several days. But I do want to thank what they were doing, and I know they're working at the other schools the same way, and we're going to be visiting them. And the PTO is starting. That's getting parents back involved. We need those parents involved and pushing their kids at home to help those teachers, and that'll make our scores better. So, we need to look at that. And I've got a policy here that I'm going to read. It's 10-10. Official action. Committee meetings or meetings is the duty, and the duty and hearings and personnel is the superintendent's responsibility. No board member, including the chair, has any authority of doing anything without the majority of the board. I didn't read that word for word, but that's what it says. Anybody want to look it up? It's 10-10, and every one of the board members needs to read that. Because any time anybody calls me, I always tell them to go through the steps, go to their teacher, go to their principal, and then go to Mr. Borders. I guide them right straight to him. And I think there are several people in here can vouch that that's the way I handle things. I do not take it on myself. I always tell them to go through the steps first. And I will continue to do that because the people put me here and I represent the people and every last child. Thank you.
Mr. Umpferson?
A couple of things. One is today's Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Rod and Joel, all of our SROs, thank y'all for what you do. Second part is, I want to read this. This is for all Cleveland County Schools, teachers, and staff. So, having just completed my second year on the school board, I would like you all to know how much I appreciate what you do for the students of Cleveland County. Cultivating excellence is not just a cheesy slogan. I see it manifested daily. It's easy to think of it in terms of test scores and graduation rates, but it's much, much more. I see it in the extra time teachers put into learning new skills and curriculum and look for ways to reach each student to ensure their success. I see it in the central office staff and administration as they constantly study and research the best ways to support our students and staff with the most up-to-date science of learning, software, and tools. I see it in the shine on the floors and the hallways in the classrooms. I see it in the care and diligence of the lunchroom staff as they ensure each child has a nutritious meal provided for them. I see it in staff and teachers taking umbrellas out for the car riders in cold and inclement weather. But most of all, it's the love and compassion for the students I've seen when visiting the schools, including today. I can't even put into word what I see these teachers doing. It absolutely blows me away. They're both wonderful and challenging days serving on the board, but to all the teachers and staff out there, y'all make me proud to be a small part of the team. So, thank y'all.
Mr. Greer?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank all the speakers that got up tonight and spoke. And if you think you wasn't heard, well, you were. I heard every one of you. If any of you would like to talk to me at a later time, that's fine. I'm always available. We did go to Grover School today, and Grover really impressed me. My mother retired from there in 1991, and I know she'd be proud of the way it's handled there now. They did, they worked together to get grants for their projects that they had, which I thought was really great. I hope that all of our schools can be doing the same way, and if not, maybe they could learn from what's going on in the Grover school system. We still have a long way to go with a lot of things here. Walter talked about working together, and yes, we need to work together. But we still have issues in the system. I'm still hearing from teachers and staff daily. So, you know, the picture of sunshine and roses is not always sunshine and roses because there truly is two sides to every story, Mr. Chairman. I've heard both sides now, so I'm going to work on trying to get things put together and come back before you guys. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Bridges?
I just want to commend the Township Number Three School. I went there on a visit this morning, and they seem to be doing a phenomenal job. I also want to echo off what Mr. Sperling stated about the bullying task force. I agree. I do think that that is an issue in our school system and every school system across America. And I just commend you for speaking about it tonight, and I hope that we can come together and get something done on this. I too support that and hope that we can help our school systems with kids being bullied because it is an issue in our school system and everywhere across America. And we really do too, as a school system, as a community, come together with some solutions and not just talk about it. And whatever it's going to take, whatever we need to do, I support it. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
I as well visited Township III this morning, and we were able to view some of the reading horizons and wit and wisdom, educational initiatives that are coming out of our educational department. And they're doing a great job. I fully look to see that serve Cleveland County as a whole, as far as across the school districts. Appreciate everybody's done as far as getting through the Christmas holiday. Appreciate the schools communicating at Crest Middle School and Crest High School. We as a district and Mr. Pless, as much as he can control many things, he can't control when the DOT decides to fix the road. And the schools worked well together. It was uncomfortable for a couple of days, but it's been done, and I appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Mr. Schor?
Yeah, I also visited Number Three this morning, and it was a great visit. And I would just say that kudos to our teachers. They're doing an excellent job and on the labor of all this. I think those of you who know me know what I did for a living for 30 years and know what I did in that. So, I'm all about school safety. I'm all about bullying, and I think those who know me know that. So, I'll leave it at that.
Just a few things. I too visited Grover. Thank you to Ms. Curtis and Ms. Petty and their staff for their hospitality. I stopped by Crest High School on the way home and got a quick look at the heating and air work that's going on. I was fortunate enough to come across one of the beam construction supervisors, and he gave me a 50-cent tour. That first section's looking like it's going to be done maybe mid-February and start switching students around. So, that work is progressing, and it's good to see that after basically a two-year effort of going through the requests for proposals, the quotes, the design work, and those things. I got to say hello to the cafeteria staff. I scared the dishwasher lady to death when I snuck around the corner, but hopefully she's all right. But Star and her folks there in the cafeteria appreciate what they're doing. And I'll also say one more time, thanks to Chip and your group for what they did over Christmas. It's no fun to fix a water leak, and it sure ain't fun when the water's cold. And it was in the low twenties and teens over Christmas. So, Mr. Schor, do you have a motion for closed session?
Yes. I make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a3 to discuss the following cases. McKinney versus Cleveland County Board of Education, Parrish versus Cleveland County Board of Education, and the EEOC complaint, Roberts versus Cleveland County Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's up to you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions or discussion on entering closed session? Those in favor, if you'd raise your hand, and that carries 9-0.
Yes, I do.
I heard Mr. Umpferson. Who's the second? Motion by Mr. Umpferson, second by Mr. Bridges. Those in favor of reentering open session, if you raise your hand, that carries. During closed session, the board received an update on the three cases mentioned. No action was taken. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I do adjourn.
That sounds like it's unanimous. Everybody go enjoy the ballgame.